Okay, if we can get everybody settled, please, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting of the Harson Island Transportation Authority on the December 16th, 2023. Order. All rise, police, for the National Administration.
Pledge of Allegiance.
P- sorry.
Flag is in the back right corner there. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just as it is for all. Amen.
Okay, roll call. Roll call. Absent excuse. Vain absent excuse. Shemansky?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
And Tornal, here. Can I take a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Center First Meeting?
I'll make the motion.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That'll turn the mic over to Dennis.
I just have a thing here. I'm gonna stand up here and prepare a presentation I just wanna call, so give me a minute here.
One other thing, too. If you have cell phones, please turn them to silent or off.
Let's hope this works, not infringe.
Well, good morning, everybody. We got a big crowd here today. Again, this was prepared for us or for me to read and do this sickness and other one out of state or country. I'm tasked with this. My name is Dennis Shemansky. I'm one of the five members of HIDA. I've been on this board for over four years. My pleasure to welcome everyone here today. On behalf of the board myself, I intend to read a statement to the record, which is videotaped in front of us here. I only deviate from the unhighlighted documents. After today's meeting, it will be posted on our website where everything that we're referring to or drawing or stating will be on our website and/or the new group page will be, that information will be out there ASAP.
Is that face?
Yes. There have been a lot of misinformation, misinformation spreading through our committee. I intend to address all of it. So if you would, sit back, relax, make yourself as comfortable as you can. I did turn the heat down to speak a little warmer there. What I tell you will be supported by many documented, complete issue of the ferry transportation to and from Harson's Island. I can tell you all this, I can't tell you all this in about five minutes. It's gonna take a little bit, so I plan to listen to you for a bit. I wanna thank, I wanna, I want, I want everyone to pay attention to my next couple of questions. Look about you. By the show of hands, who here is a full-time resident? Who here is a part-time resident? Or who would just here lives out in one of the flats?
Full-time.
The full-time residents, there's quite a few, thank you. Part-time residents? All right, make sure they get their hands up there. And then all the people that live out of the outer islands. Appreciate everybody for showing up here today. Yeah, we're just here to give the information facts and nothing but the facts. I intend... Sorry. I intend to speak here today. Hopefully, when I'm done, there won't be any questions by anyone. I doubt that much, but... Many years ago, there was three ferries that carried travelers to Harson's Island. Two of them went out of business for whatever reason.
You have to put your phone on airplane mode, or that one's off.
This one's off.
Yeah. Sorry about that. This is the first time we're using this, this technology here. Two of them went out of business for whatever reason and only...
Try putting your phone on airplane mode. That one doesn't, I don't know.
I, I was incorporated nine nights.
Take your shirt off.
Turn it off.
Just use the mic.
Yeah, I'll just take the same thing off.
Why don't you use the mic?
Can everybody hear me? Or should I get a mic?
Yeah, I hear you.
All right, well, I got a big mouth, so we'll go with that. All right, so HIDA was incorporated in 1997. It was created by the Clay Township Board of Trustees back when John Manos was the supervisor. Each member of this board has to be approved to be on HIDA by the Clay Township Board. Thank you for HIDA or Artie for letting me be on the board. Public Act 196 of 1986 vests certain powers to HIDA. HIDA can only be dissolved by a vote of the legislature. Letches, these are tough words here, guys. Our township supervisor knows this, and I will explain that later. The powers of HIDA are limited to the geographical boundary of voting Precinct Four of Clay Township. The HIDA board has no power to set that geographical boundaries of Precinct Four. Precinct Four was boundary was drawn by the Township Election Commission and approved by the Township Board long before most of us were probably even alive. If you own property in Precinct Four, HIDA did not put you there, the township did. Prior to 2017, the family, the Bryson family wanted to increase the ferry rates to go to the Michigan Public Service Commission, just like DT and SEMCO have to make a request. The Michigan Public Service Commission, MPSC, will be referred to, then will decide if it should be grant or rate increase or not. Again, I just, I am just a reader of this, okay? Bryson family ferry history. Dave Bryson, Bob Bryson, Artie Bryson, grandfather's, grandfather started up Champion Auto Ferry in 1937. Again, at one point, there were three different competing ferries to the island. To date, Champion only is the one that exists. In 1992, Dave Bryson purchased the ferry from his grandfather without using any of his own money. He immediately went to the Michigan Public Service Commission and asked for a rate increase and asked the Michigan Public Service Commission to recognize his purchase as a debt and also give him a 24% salary increase. Side note, I'm gonna get to different exhibits that show this letters and whatnot. The MPSC declined. The Bryson family, Dave Bryson, then told MPSC that it planned to suspend operations in stages. This included reducing ferry crossings, eliminating $20 ticket books, and limiting the number of crossings. MPSC said the Bryson's family could not do that. Interstate Commerce Commission, which is gonna be referred to as ICC. In 1995, the Bryson family went to the Interstate Commerce Commission, ICC, a branch of the federal government, claiming they were not subject to the MPSC because they were governed by the Interstate Commerce Clause of the United States Constitution. The Bryson family told that the ICC, they were an interstate water carrier. The Bryson family got a federal license to operate and immediately raised the rates. But ICC regulates interstate commerce, not intrastate. Means like, they're not driving from here to Ohio. They're driving from Elginak to Harson's Island, which is the state of Michigan, and that is what is called intrastate. Intrastate is a commerce between two states, and intrastate is just common commerce in one state. When the feds found out what the Bryson family did, they told them they could not do that and revoked their license. Later, the MPC told the Bryson family they would have to return the money that illegally received while claiming that they were a water carrier during interstate commerce. MPSC said they would not prosecute the Bryson family for illegally charging people if they returned the money. Some people here do remember that date when it happened. Finally, Bryson family sued the MPSC. We are publishing the first three pages of the Michigan Appeals Court decision, but not just look at the one page. The Bryson family actually argued that they are not a ferry. Apparently, prior to this lawsuit, which was decided in the Michigan Court of Appeals, the Bryson family did not know they were operating a ferry service. The Court of Appeals told the Brysons that the ferry is a ferry, and everything I have told you so far is all contained in the three pages, which I'm gonna go into Exhibit One. Some people said I should have a bullet on my chest here, but we'll leave it at that. So this is decided October 2nd of 1998, Champion Auto Ferry, Inc. versus Public Service Commission. It's published, Michigan Court of Appeals opinion. At the outset, now, this is all gonna be on the webpage, all of the information. I'm just reading a couple highlighted areas. At the outset, it should be noted that CAFF, which is Champion Auto Ferry, contends not with, notwithstanding its voluntary adoption of nomenclatures suggesting that it is a ferry service that is a water carrier service and that it does not operate a ferry service. The map reflects that CAF's dock in Elginak of Butts State Highway M29, its Harson's Island dock of Butts State Highway 154. Again, we're not gonna go into all this. You all can read this on your own. It's gonna be on the webpages. A remainder of this option will refer to the service operated by CAF as a ferry. CAF has operated this ferry service since 1937. There are no bridges or competing ferry, commercial ferries. The court recited in December of 1996, and this is in parentheses, in 1992, however, after David C. Bryson, whose grandfather founded CAF, acquired sole ownership of the stock of the company, debt, creating debt on the books of the company by the way of payment for interest purchase, and without expanding his own funds, immediately began a campaign to raise rates for the service provided. Several rates increases were allowed by the PSC, but others were rejected. When CAF appealed PCS's rejection of the rate increase request in the prior appeal, this court affirmed finding that the rates established were reasonable and rather than confiscatory, you know, they weren't, still, they did it legally, legitimately. It was fur-hell that the PSC had not improperly interfered with management decisions and refusing to recognize the acquisition debt that Bryson had endeavored or a 24,000 or 24% salary increase Bryson gave himself in setting the rates and charges. Obviously, there's just a lot of stuff on here that, again, this should be read the whole thing, but we'd be here for hours. So shortly after that decision on January 6th, 1997, CAF announced it to a letter to the PCS Directive Motor Carrier Regulation that because of its inability to obtain what it deemed reasonable rate relief, it planned to suspend operations in stages. CAF announced in its intent, beginning January 15th, 1997, at 6:00 AM, to discontinue the sale of 20 trip commuter discount book tickets. It proposed to suspend commencing February 3rd, 1997, night ferry service between 10:00 and 6:00 AM. Then after ferry services started February 10th, there'd be one afternoon trip to provide service on, for the school bus, and then on February 16th, 1997, at 2:00 PM, to terminate all ferry services between Elginak and Harson's Island. This announcement, however, was rendered negatory by the PCS decision of its present case, T1289, because by a decision of CAF, it's required to give 12 months notice of its intent to discontinue all or part of its operations. And if you remember that what happened back in, there for that short day. Blue Water. So in 1999, Blue Water Transit Commission, Blue Water, attempted to help off the citizens of Harson's Island. Blue Water attempted to negotiate an agreement with the Bryson family to provide the Bryson family public funding called Act 51 money to help offset transportation infrastructure costs. That way, they could hold down the rates. This was before Artie was the supervisor. Immediately upon signing this agreement, the Bryson family increased the ferry rate. The Bryson family took the position that since Blue Water was now involved, the Bryson family did not have to go to the Public Service Commission for approval of rate increases. This ended in disaster, and Blue Water withdrew from the agreement, and the Bryson family did not get the public funding. There was a report, MDOT report, that was, just came out December 1st. That was in...
June of '23.
Well, it was finished in June '23. It was published in December 1st of this year. But in there, it's, it had some details that we brought up last meeting about Act 51 monies and who can get Act 51 monies and who can't get Act 51 monies. There's some emails that were from the old HIDA board chair and other committee members, where it'd be Exhibit Two, which I'm just gonna, just touch base lightly on them. Just a few of them on here. Again, they're all gonna be on the webpage tonight, or the webpage might up this weekend or end of the weekend, but on the Facebook one will be on here tonight. There was a, when that contract, and when I said that, when that contract in 1999 came about, you know what, I'm just gonna stick to this, 'cause I'm gonna get lost here. I'm sorry. In 2012, Artie was elected township supervisor. You would have been dead not to know this, 'cause he is Dave Bryson's brother. He has been our supervisor for the past 11 years. Thank you, sir. After being elected, bless you, bless you. After being elected in 2012, Supervisor Bryson requested that the attorney, John McNamee, provide him with his opinion on whether he could dissolve HIDA and among other questions. Now, again, this is right after he got elected. Mr. McNamee informed Supervisor Bryson that as supervisor, he could not dissolve HIDA. Apparently, HIDA was an issue for this, was an issue for Supervisor Bryson since the start of his term in office. Going back to 2000 and, or Blue Water, yeah. Blue Water now in 2013, attempted to help off the citizens again, Harson's Island, by agreeing to give the Brysons $1.6 million from the state to hold down the rates, Act 51 money. In return, Blue Water wanted rate control of the ferry. Mr. Bryson only wanted the money and would yield no control over rates. That $1.6 million was to be a yearly payment, not just a single payment. Since 2013, if you figure the math, the Bryson fans would have received $16 million over the past 10 years, that he didn't want any oversight from the government. Now comes the bridge. It's kinda how the whole HIDA thing even started, right? So during the past several years, Detroit International Bridge Company, we're gonna go back to, is DIBC, proposed a bridge partnership with HIDA to help finance an $80 million bridge, where HIDA would get $40 million from the state and give it to DIBC to build a bridge. After many meetings, it became clear that DIBC, just like the Bryson family, wanted public money on a handshake with HIDA. It would not commit itself to setting a reasonable rate. There is a better chance for HIDA to build a bridge to the moon than to build a bridge with the DIBC over the North Channel. Anyone here that wants to build a bridge, by all means, you have our permission. The bridge is history and causing unneeded focus away from what HIDA should have been doing from day one, and that was to create its own alternate transportation service. One thing to keep in mind, the Bryson family and the DIBC have interests that are opposite of HIDA. The family and DIBC want to make as much money as they can, and they're naturally interested in high rates. HIDA wants the lowest rates possible. It's tough to form a partnership when the partnership's disagreed from the start and what the goal should be. HIDA, for the last 18 months, HIDA's tried to get state federal funding via grants to launch a ferry service. At the same time, HIDA's been engaging in talks with a private company that builds roads and infrastructure throughout the state. They actually were here last year and gave a presentation, if anybody remembers. This is a major infrastructure builder, well capable of building docks, and has lenders that will assist in the financing of any project. To date, HIDA has not received assistance from the township board to help secure any funding for the ferry service. Blue Water, on the other hand, has informed HIDA that it can provide HIDA substantial funding, perhaps as much as $2 million a year for operating cost. Other than that, HIDA is on its own to launch a ferry service. I want to report that HIDA has been quietly lobbying people in the governor's office for assistance in making headway. HIDA is optimistic that this lobbying, lobbying will bear fruit. I'm not at liberty to divulge specifics on these lobbying efforts. I can tell you, however, the governor's office recently secured a federal grant of $10 million to be spent on the Beaver Island ferry. You guys are familiar with that. HIDA's trying to get in line for this kind of funding, but HIDA needs to continue taking steps to launch its own service. The Eastern Upper, we call UPTA, has received a free $5 million icebreaker ferry from the federal government. All of this available to HIDA once we start service. It is not available to private business owners. Keep this in mind. HIDA has the ability to obtain millions in public funding from the state and local government besides Act 51 money if it starts its own service. Up until 2017, the Bryson family had to go to the Public Service Commission to request a rate increase. That ended in 2017. Well, how did that end? State Representative, now state senator, Dan Lowers changed that law in August of 2014, changed that in August of 2014. Bryson family held a political fundraiser for Lowers, who then a state representative at Artie's house. We have a flyer right here. It'll be on the webpage as well. There's a $200 per host couple to attend and a $75 per person. Again, it is beyond the webpage of all the sponsors that were there. It's just a normal political thing. It's not a big deal. But you can go check out on Dan Lowers fundraising events back in 2014 and how much he actually raised. In 2017, Lowers introduced a bill to the state legislature that benefited just the Bryson family. One company in the entire state, one family in the entire state. It removed the Bryson family from having to go to the Michigan Public Service Commission for a rate increase. Let me read just parts of this analysis in House Bill. So everybody's kinda familiar with the House Bill 4807. That was back in 2017. Dan Lowers was the sponsor of that bill. Basically, his, gave, took away from the Michigan State Police, you know, or the authority. All right, let me just read it. I'm not good with all these words. "House Bill 4807 would amend the Carrier's Water Act by codifying existing oversight by the Michigan Public of State Police and describe the process where the MPS, or MSFP would approve or reject rates. Charges or tariffs for carriers by water who primarily transport vehicles between two state highways. This bill would have an indeterminate but yet likely minor fiscal impact on the MSSP. The bill could create minor administrative costs for the regulatory and credentialing section within the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Division." Basically, they were saying is they thought that having this bill on that, that the Michigan State Police would be overwhelmed with, with options from Harson's Island. Well, that wasn't the case. "The apparent problem," this is a legislative analysis, you know, that attorney, that the bill is to, is understood to impact only Champion's Auto Ferry, which runs between Elginak and Harson's Island. This proposed provision regarding rate approval would only apply to carriers that primarily, primarily transport vehicles directly between two state highways. According to the committee testimony, the two Michigan ferries serviced that fall under this description are Champion Auto Ferry and the ferry company serving Mackinac Island. The Act currently states that the pricing oversight by the MSSP does not apply when a ferry company is operating within municipality under an agreement with, with that municipality, that Mackinac Island ferries will fall under that provision. According to the committee testimony, the proposed legislation would replace with existing metric for assessing rate increases, which applies to the utilities with a reasonable standard that would more accurately reflect the function of the ferry service. And then, basically, the rules of the bill is that it just states the Department of State Police may examine and audit in all books, accounts, records, and papers of a carrier by water. Carrier by water shall furnish the Department of State Police its proper officers and employees and all data in relation to the investment, income, operating expenses, and other statistical data as the department may require. Basically, those, they can be audited at any given point, which is one of the rules of that. As you can tell, lawyer, or Lowers here sold out the citizens of Harson's Island for the new shillings of Bryson silver. Again, I'm just reading this. I didn't write this. Or should I say, Dan Lowers, that immediately upon the law pass, the Bryson would raise the ferry rates $2 for cash and $1 for big, $1 for book tickets. Now, the Bryson family has monopoly in the protection of our township supervisor. We don't have many options. A last option is propose millage to raise valuable funds to get a ferry up and running. We have not been flying blind. We know the general price of docks ferries. We know the road count. We have locations to build the docks. We need to get the grant funding, we need to get into the grant funding game. We need to exist. So let's address this millage. It will be placed on the ballot for voter approval, not HIDA approval. It'll be on the February 27th. It provides for a levy up to 4.5 mils on property in Precinct Four. Again, HIDA did not set the precinct boundaries. If it passes, some people in Precinct Four will pay tax and never receive benefits. People who own substantial properties will pay more in real dollars than people that don't have expensive property. Again, a person that has a million dollar taxable value will pay 10 times like the rest of us. If you have a $10,000 or $100,000 property, you're progressively paying about $450 per year. We don't make the law. The politicians did all that. What about the people that don't vote Precinct Four?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you repeat that again? So you're saying that $450 a year to somebody that has an assessed value of $100,000?
That is correct.
So if somebody has an assessed value of $1 million, is it gonna pay?
10 times the amount, yep. That was, that was the point, yep. I'll read it again for you. People who own substantial... Yeah, yeah, taxable, yeah. That's the key word. I don't know if I did, I must not have said that, but I'll re-say that. People who own substantial properties will pay more in real dollars than those people who don't own expensive property. A person who has a $1 million taxable value will pay 10 times what a person who owns property with a taxable value of $100,000. Given the math, 4.5 mils on $100,000 taxable is $450, times 10. What about people who don't want, that's just to the gentleman and the other folks that are on the outer islands. What about people who don't vote in Precinct Four but own property there, like the people in the flats or the outer islands? Is it unfair for them to pay for a tax increase for a ferry they will never use? Let's talk about the people in the flats. Supervisor Bryson has informed HIDA that he has 30-plus emails from people that live in the flats or outer islands that oppose the millage. It is unfair that they should be taxed to support a ferry service when they will never benefit. Look at your tax bill. 50% of your tax bill for, bill pays for a police millage and fire millage. The St. Clair County Sheriff's Department policies, polices the lake, polices the lake, and they have authority to, to police what happens on those outer islands. The resident of Clay Township passed a 10 mil increase for the police alone. The township currently is only charging 4.85 mils right now. The township can change and add another 5.15 just on the police millage alone. Did you guys get a vote on that? No. But Supervisor Bryson wants to protect the family ferry business, so he's making a point showing the negative. The township didn't even man the fire department on the island until this The township didn't even man the fire department on the island until this past year. Has there been a fire in the past 10 years where whatever was cut off fire got burnt down to the ground? It's not the fault of the fire departments. It's a very difficult time to respond to a fire on an out island, but these are taxes that you pay for and you never got a chance to vote on. Coming up onto this Monday coming up, Monday's Township Board Meeting, Supervisor Bryson intends to pass a township resolution at the Township Board Meeting, exempting people in the flats from paying a millage that we are putting on the ballot. He is only thinking of them in fairness. Probably invited many of yous here today, which we showed, asking you to raise your all's hands. I'm sure it has not occurred to Supervisor Bryson that if he does that, it will lower revenue available to Haida to compete against his family business. I'm sure he's only worried about fairness.
Excuse me? Can you repeat what you said?
You know what I think, Dennis?
We have a forum here for open discussion.
We'll be having questions at the end. Please hold your comments and let Dennis speak.
This isn't the township. Let's talk about the people on the island. The Bryson family owns this island. They decide when you come over, when you leave, and what it costs you. You say Haida can, we say Haida can set rates at $5 round trip with a new government-owned ferry service. You can argue all day long whether I am right or wrong, but ask yourself, how much will the Bryson family be charging five or 10 years from now? They have twice passed up opportunities for government funding. That alone makes the ferry cost more for every islander every day. This millage is your future. Vote against it and you vote for uncontrolled rates by the Bryson family. Vote for it to own your own government-funded ferry, a ferry which each of you will own, a ferry where you get to say, have a say in how much is charged. Keep in mind, the four and a half mils has to be levied. The vote is for five years, but it can be stopped and not assessed every year. It doesn't have to go the five years. You don't get to buy a ferry like Dave Bryson did where you pay nothing. You need to decide whether you are willing to put down a down payment with this millage and therefore own your own ferry. Again, I am just a reader here. Please note personal things here. Freedom of Information Act, so we were just FOIA, abbreviated. We have received a FOIA request from an attorney named Megan Cassidy. She wants all substantial records of Haida, including information that we have paid thousands of dollars to acquire. She has sued us for the information. This information is, however, protected her from her FOIA request because it was complied with confidential nondisclosure agreements being signed by Haida and providing party. She wants every document that Haida has. We will not provide confidential information. I suspect someone in this room has retained her services to have her request, have her requested to the party wanting to remain anonymous. That's okay with the board, but we can't help but question, who hired an attorney with the last name Cassidy, as such as Paul Cassidy's attorney on this board? He happens to have a sister named Megan, but she's not an attorney. There must be 5,000 attorneys from here in West Bloomfield that you could have hired that could do a FOIA request. We can't help but think it's suspicious that you picked this attorney based on her name. Please tell your attorney, we will not provide confidential information that she has requested. Tell her Haida is well aware of that. We will require her to divulge her client in discovery. Website, please let her, please tell her one you know to visit our website. There will be people who are angry about what I have said here today. I'm getting that sense already. Then they will tell you lies, or worse yet, say that I'm lying. We will post many documents on the website that what I have said here is true. Haida did not cause me today to list the arguments for or against the millage. You can speak your mind, but each person gets to weigh their choice when they vote. Kind of a little recap here. Keep in mind, again, the Bryson family sued the Public Service Commission back in 1997. In that case titled Champion Auto Ferry versus Michigan Public Service Commission, the Bryson family claimed Champion's was not a ferry service, but a water carrier, and therefore should not go to the Public Service Commission to increase rates. Go to the internet, read it. Do you really think that the Bryson family would deal fairly with Haida in collaborative agreement? The Bryson family just wants public money. It stated in 1999, Blue Water reached an agreement with the Bryson family to funnel Act 51 to the Bryson family to help out the citizens of Harson's Island and maintain reasonable rates. After signing the agreement, the Bryson family immediately raised the rates. Clay Township, our Clay Township, threatened a lawsuit over what they felt was fraudulent negotiations by the Bryson family. After that, the deal was off. In 2013 was another bad deal. Blue Water was going to get the Bryson family $1.6 million, but wanted oversight on rate increases. That 1.6 was for every year. Again, in the past 10 years, that'd have been $16 million. The Bryson family would not agree to it because Blue Water wanted oversight. Now, if someone disputes what I have told you, tell them to show their proof and support of what they are saying. So if you're going to talk the talk, prove it. The island has always been a hotbed of rumors, and some people distort the truth. Some people just don't like their facts. Have their facts right and speak out in emotional necessity. Don't trust anyone. Haida and the Bryson family. Haida sent a letter to the Brysons back in August of 26, 2022, which, again, it's been on our webpage. We presented it in meetings in the past, but... Dear Mr. Bryson, this is again...
No, no, Haida offered to buy the ferry. You want to say that about the letter? Previous page.
Well, there's some emails going back and forth between the attorney and Jake Bryson and Harold from the Harson's Island or the Haida. Which one is first here? "I have emailed you a letter containing Champion Auto Ferry's response to your letter dated April 28th, in which Haida offers to purchase the ferry. In addition, as several items in our letter are time-sensitive, I have provided an electronic copy as well. Look forward to your response." Jake Bryson. And then, this is from the third to Jake. "We never received a response in this matter. Can you please resend it?" Here, generally, I can... Yeah, I don't understand that whole thing, you know.
Hey, Dennis, who wrote what you read?
I'm not sure.
Good question.
Well, I mean, it was members of the Haida Board, I should say that. It was consulted by the...
I'm saying you didn't read it, or you didn't...
I've reread it, but again, getting up here, I don't know if you're a good Republican, but you can come on up here, you can read it for me if you're better with it.
Who was the author?
But...
No, we're going to...
Obviously, somebody on the board wrote it, right?
You're going to be able to ask questions at the end. Please follow the agenda and show a little respect for the speakers.
Point of order?
It's been out since I became a board member, so I don't know. Again, you know, again, I apologize. This was a letter that, we had wrote to Champion Auto Ferry again in April of 2022, asking for the, to purchase the ferry. We had received a letter May 16th, 2022, from Champion Auto's Ferry. This response to your letter dated April 28th, 22, which the Harson's Island Chancery Authority has requested to purchase Champion Auto Ferry. At this time, it is our opinion that no one will either, that no one either on the Haida Board or currently employed by Haida has necessary skillset, qualifications, or experience to successfully operate this ferry to Harson's Island. As such, we cannot in good conscience sell the business to Haida as we place the safety of our passengers, reliability to the service of our customers, and our reputation ahead of our own financial gain. I am reminded of what recently happened to the Arnold Ferry Line in Mackinac. However, I would like to provide you with a counterproposal. If you, this letter will be on the, again, on the webpage. We don't really get into the things here, but again, you know, the egg sling and whatever you want to call it is in that letter, and you can read that. We would partner with, as that letter that was written, we said that we would partner with Dave Bryson as a partner, or Champion Auto Ferry, I should say. We know the finance is the company. He was invited to meet us with an open meeting to discuss it. No back deal rooms with us. We represent you. He never responded. The Hurtel letter. "After this attempt to collaborate with the Bryson family, we were contacted in March of '23 by Representative and State Senator Kevin Hurtel's office. We responded a letter to the Senator Hurtel dated April 2nd, 2023. On behalf of, dear Senator Hurtel, on behalf of the Harson's Island Chancery Authority, Haida would like to thank you for your interest and support in establishing a safe, reliable, and affordable transportation to and from Harson's Island and mainland. Recently, Paul McAdams from your office called and informed me..." Again, this is from Harold that wrote this. "...the Clay Township Supervisor Artie Bryson, brother of David Bryson, contacted your office to inquire whether you could arrange a meeting between Blue Water Transportation Committee, which is called BWATC, and Haida and Mr. Bryson. I'm not sure from his request what the purpose or topic of this meeting could be. Please allow me to detail past interaction between Blue Water, Haida, and Mr. Bryson from a historical perspective. In 1997, Blue Water negotiated operational contract with Champion Auto Ferry that would allow Blue Water to funnel funding to CAF, Champion Auto Ferry, and hopefully lower or maintain affordable rates for passengers. Immediately after signing the agreement, Champion Auto Ferry raised the rates, claiming it has no longer required to seek approval from the MPSC. After a lawsuit threatened by the supervisor of Clay Township, Blue Water evidently withdrew from this agreement, believing CAF, Champion Auto Ferry, did not negotiate the agreement in good faith, but rather Champion Auto Ferry was only modified by desire to avoid future MPSC rate oversight and approval." Which they're supporting documentation with this, with this letter. This is a letter of April 2nd of 2023. Okay. Let him know I... Where was he at here? "After a lawsuit was threatened by the supervisor of Clay Township, that would have been John Manos, not Artie." Eventually, he withdrew from the agreement, believing Champion Auto Ferry did not negotiate... Champion Auto Ferry did not negotiate the agreement in good faith, but rather that Champion Auto Ferry was only motivated by desire to avoid future MPSC rate oversight and approval. This matter remained dormant to 2013, when Blue Water attempted to negotiate an agreement that would have provided Mr. Bryson $1.6 million in state and federal funds every year to operate Champion Auto Ferry. It would also have given Blue Water authority to set ferry rates. While Blue Water signed the negotiated agreement, Mr. Bryson declined to sign it. Because this agreement was never materialized, Haida has approached Mr. Bryson in April of '22 regarding a possibility to purchase Champion Auto Ferry. Mr. Bryson responded with a letter, it may have been '22, which I had just read a little bit ago, stating that Haida lacked the ability and experience to operate a ferry. Rather, he requested that Haida provide Champion Auto Ferry with the substantial public funds to help him financially run his business without any consideration by him for what Haida could expect in return for payment of these funds. Haida later responded with a letter in August of '22, inviting Mr. Bryson to partner with Haida and then run and operate Champion Auto Ferry by way of public-private partnership. Haida invited Mr. Bryson to attend its next public meeting to discuss this idea. Mr. Bryson did not accept this invitation and never attended. Copy the correspondence, emails went back and forth. You should also be aware that for the past 10 years, the Detroit International Bridge Company, again, DIBC, proposed to partner with Haida to build a bridge from the mainland to the island. In the past year, it has become apparent to Haida that an agreement with the DIBC has been difficult to negotiate. Haida has since abandoned this venture and will not, will only consider such a partnership if DIBC is willing to be more open and allow Haida to share in control of setting rates, structure, and operations. At this point, Haida has moved forward with its own plan to solve the ferry problem. To steal a quote from a front of Champion Auto Ferry ticket written in pig Latin, "Hayday Ferry Fay Esway or Fay Oneway," translated, "The ferry waits for no man, and no longer will Haida." Our board has now figuratively left the dock and sails forward with plans to launch its own public ferry service. In furtherance of its goals, Haida has expanded substantial funds to acquire necessary information to obtain government funding. Haida has also extended funds to acquire its property on both sides of the North Channel and from which it establishes operation. Haida believes it will eventually reduce ferry rates fees from the present to $5 a round trip. No Haida Board members compensated for its service on this board. Members have at their own expense traveled to Upper Peninsula to study and consult with the UPTA Transportation Authority on setting up ferry line, acquiring efficient knowledge to obtain funding, learn operation procedures. UPTA has been very supportive and informational, information given. One member of our board has traveled to Wisconsin to meet with a ferry building contractor and has acquired enough information for Haida to contract for new ferry boat construction. Haida has also sought a private partner to build docks and infrastructure necessary to begin operations. Further, members have met with and are securing funding for the ferry through MDOT, SEMCOG, and numerous state and federal agencies. Again, all this done has been without compensation to any member. We are mindful that Mr. Bryson has attempted to get MDOT funding and has avoided discussing any funding issue with our board. We would certainly discuss with Mr. Bryson anything that he believes would assist us in providing transportation to and from the island. Our situation has changed, however, since we made our proposal to partner with him in August of '22. We have crossed the river at that issue. We now intend to own and operate our own ferry service. We would welcome and appreciate any assistance Mr. Bryson could give us in accomplishing our goal. As Chairman of Haida, I do, I do not have plenipotentiary powers to negotiate any agreement, meaning you have to be in front of the board to do that. Our full board must vote upon any contract binding Haida. For that reason, if Mr. Bryson desires to be meeting with Haida, he can contact our secretary to add him on the agenda for our next meeting. This way, each board member will be fully informed of the issue deciphered himself and what he's doing at this point. Sincerely yours, Harold Bane. So, again, these things are all on the, are going to be on the webpage. Now, after we propose a millage... Since we put out that we were going to do a millage, we announced that it's the only option right now for us. Now that we have proposed a millage, the Bryson family has sent another letter to Haida, and I'm going to read that. You guys wanted answers, we're here to give you the answers, the truth. And this is just, we appreciate all your information. You'll have an opportunity to say your questions after. We have public comments.
All these questions are on the website, if you put them on there like you said you did already, all this information that you wasted...
you wasted.
Bring it up later.
All right. Let Dennis finish, we'll have questions and answers.
Point of order.
Is that the letter from the Bryson family?
This is the letter.
Hold your questions till we ask you to have them. It's going to start when Dennis has done.
When is he done?
When he's done.
Let him talk.
Let him talk.
He's not answering our question.
It's not open to answer yet.
I have FAQs. They will be passed out. He's got about 10 minutes.
10 minutes. Okay, thank you very much, 10 minutes.
It's going to be 12, if you want to keep talking.
Dennis, read.
No, why don't you continue? He's got to 11:35.
You know, I didn't ask for this position. I never, ever once asked for this position. I was nominated, so back off. You guys want to say something to me personally, we'll take it somewhere else. I'm tired, I'm just reading this stuff here because no one else is going to read it. It is going to be, but we had to have this public information. I just got this this morning or last night, I'm sorry. Jesus. Okay, this is from Champion Auto Ferry to Harson's Island Chancery Authority. Sir, in an effort to stabilize ferry rates by continuing to seek state funding, again, I would emphasize that first bit, listen to the first paragraph of this. In an effort to stabilize ferry rates by continuing to seek state funding, such as the Act 51 subsidy, Champion's Auto Ferry would like to pursue the process of negotiating and operating agreement with the Blue Water Area Transportation Authority, who is the only public body authorized to receive these funds. Should Champion's efforts be successful in obtaining satisfactory open agreements with Blue Water, it would eliminate the need for future ferry rates increases. Again, the MDOT report that was done by the state of Michigan, you know, Michigan Department of Transportation, they gave the whole summary. Those are the things that you should be looking at and reading where they say 100%. Champion Auto Ferry has no public assets, therefore does not qualify for federal or FBP capital operational funding. This is from MDOT. Neither private operators are interested in receiving state, federal funding assistance as they would like to retain operational control and financial flexibility without the need to adhere to public funding recipient bureaucracies. These conditions might lead to a natural local monopoly that hurts public welfare where there is a lack of accountability to serve with a satisfactory level of service. It seems there is a need for state authorities to step in and improve the service quality and affordability as local township authorities have little influence on their operations according to the provided feedback by some residents. This is right out of, this is MDOT's word, not mine. Harson's Island and Boys Blanc Islands, both ferry operators are not interested, they recited again, both ferry operators are not interested in receiving state and federal funding assistance as they would like to remain independent for profit, profit operators and nonattached to any state, federal bureaucracies. We know that, see, you know, I don't really want to read all this stuff, but. Where's the contract thing?
Hey, can I ask a simple question real quick? Upon us to David's charge for foot traffic.
Where's the? Is this number eight? All right, now after we propose a millage, the Bryson family has sent another letter to Haida, which, again, I read the beginning of it, if I would recommend that you read the rest of it. Let's assume that the Bryson family is financially breaking even on a ferry today. There are no loss, no profits. Is Haida going to give him 1.6 million a year to hold down the ferry rates? Let's say we give 1.6 million dollars a year and increase it to a $200,000 a year income. That means we use the balance of the 1.6 to reduce the ferry rate. Let's say there are 330 cars, 330,000 cars that ride the ferry every year. That means we would reduce the ferry rate by $4.25. 1.6 million minus 200,000 is 1.4 million divided by 330,000 cars equals $4.25. $10 at 4.25 equals 5.75. Now our ferry crossing is 5.75 a round trip. Who wants rates of 5.75 trip and no millage?
I do.
No millage and just lower the rates.
So I'll send your comments, please.
So on December 11th, again, the December 11th letter that I started reading, again, read that on tonight and Monday on the webpage. How do I know that is fictitious? It says in the letter that they are trying to get Act 51 money. Well, we know that they are, the state of Michigan has said they cannot get Act 51 money. Michigan Department of Transportation looked at the ferry problem last summer and MDOT issued a report in June of '23, which we received that summer first morning. We didn't tell MDOT these things, the Bryson family did. I had, it's right here. Haida believes the Bryson family will fight this millage to the death. They have made us, we'll sorry offer, they made this lucidary offer so that Bryson family can now campaign against the millage and tell you that we are unreasonable and just trying to raise your taxes, but their offer, if accepted, would avoid raising taxes. They're going to give you seniors 50% discount. That's a carrot, right? What happened to the, what they told MDOT? Blue Water will agree to anything Haida says. Without Haida, Blue Water is not going to do anything. That's the, that's the bottom line. So Haida didn't come here empty-handed. Haida here has a contract right now for Jake Bryson. He can sign right now, if you like, I'm going to read it. And again, it will be on the, the contract. Bottom line is, Haida here guarantees at a starting range that, I'll just read it for you, because that way you guys can beat crap out of me. I still have like three minutes left. This contract is made between and entered into us as part of an effective date of October of December 16, 2023, by between the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission, as intended to organize and existing under provision of Urban Act PA 1967. There's a lot of legal stuffs here, 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 so let's just get to the gist of it here. Now, therefore, in consideration of the mutual covenants, agreements, and representations contained here within, Blue Water, Haida, and Champion agree as follows. Haida through Blue Water will acquire Act 51 money and distribute it to Champion. Champion shall operate the ferry service, Champion shall operate the ferry service in its presence, form, and manner, and Jacob Bryson shall remain owner-operator, although payment of fees shall only be by debit and credit card, contract of filing, bypass scan. Haida will, shall administer all financial responsibilities of the service, including accounting for all income and paying all expenses. Haida shall pay the owner-operator a salary of $200,000 annually and provide health care insurance for all the owner-operator and his family. Salary shall be adjusted every year to keep place with the rate of inflation. Haida shall reduce the rate based on transportation trip of 330,000 tires by dividing Act 51 money and subtracting salary and benefits, benefits and costs of owner-operation signed this agreement. Haida shall reduce the rates of 5.75 per car if Haida receives the 1.6 Act 51 money and reduce further if more than 1.6 million is received. Ferry rates shall be set by Haida as in its August meeting every year. Upon termination of this agreement by, for any reason, all property, real or personal, whether attached as a fixture or used as ferry replacement points, shall remain the property of Haida. In the event Champion's desire to transfer ownership, possession of control, or any of all its assets, Haida shall have the right of first refusal to purchase Champion's ownership or real personal property. In the event Haida does not wish to execute, the right of first refusal, Haida still has the authority to prove such sale, transfer. Signed by Blue Water, signed by Haida, and it just lacking Jake's signature. So I think my part's done here, you can guys open up the.
Okay, well, go ahead and open it up for questions. If you would, come up to the front, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to respond.
Can I just say, if anybody is not getting emails, there's a questionnaire, give us your email, we'll add you to our list. We have a few that have bounced back, so we might have a typo on your, on your email address. And yeah, if you can come up here with your question, I'm going to put some handouts over here, which are all on the website, mostly the FAQs, the history of what Haida has accomplished, and their basic business plan. So I'm going to put those up here.
Chair recognize me yet? Yes, I do, Artie. Artie Bryson, Clay Township Supervisor. Where do I even begin? A few things. A few things. I think two meetings ago, two meetings ago, Haida announced that they were going to do this millage proposal. And right then I warned Haida, be careful. Haida, as a board, cannot say vote yes. Haida can just say, we're going to ask for this money, and this is what it's going to be spent for. Just like if township was going for a village, or the schools, or the library, or the ambulance, they can just say, what, we're asking, we're asking this much money, it's going to be spent for this. They can't tell you to vote yes. Basically, it's against the law to use public funds to campaign. I hear a lot of campaigning here, I just want to warn Haida. And I did it at your meeting, didn't I?
Show a little respect for the speaker. Come on. We're not on a street corner.
Number two, in this letter that was written, you could probably substitute the Bryson family for Champion's Auto Ferry in every sentence. You're depicting the Bryson ferry as Champion's Auto Ferry, and, I'm sorry, Champion's Auto Ferry is its own entity. So, they referred back, when I first got in the office, I tried to dissolve Haida, not true. When I first got in the office, if you regard or remember, I dove into the books big time, and I found some big problems in Clay Township. I found that Clay Township was in arrears to the IRS for $700,000. I found that there was embezzlement going on in Clay Township to $271,000. And I couldn't mention it, couldn't talk about it. It was under investigation, so I really dove into the books. And I see where Haida was supposed to give us audits and reporting and all kinds of stuff to the township, which we never received, the township, for 10, 12 years, never received. So I did get a legal opinion on the status of Haida because they haven't met in years, and do they have to give us the township this reporting? Because I asked for it and the Haida board back then denied it. And there's lots, and you know, I wanted to know the status, and there was like eight, nine questions on this legal opinion. One was, how does, if Haida can be dissolved or not? And said that the state legislature had to do it, or themselves. Okay, fine. But they make it, that's the only reason I wanted to get that, is how I can get rid of Haida. We did try to make a deal with Blue Water. The St. Clair County Commissioner, Ray Topp, then myself as a supervisor, talking to Dennis Wilson, the Blue Water Transportation Authority, about getting some subsidies and rate release. Great idea. And we met several, several times. We agreed on a framework, basic framework. And at the time, Clay Township signed off on it, the Harson's Island Association signed off on it, Blue Water signed off on it, the county commissioner signed off on it. And then at the 11th hour, Haida sent a letter saying they agreed to the framework. But they won't show you, it's two days after they gave me that letter, they gave me a rejection of the framework, bullet by bullet, why they rejected each bullet of that framework. So ultimately, they can tell you whatever they want. Haida is the reason Blue Water withdrew back in 2013. And I'll give you that, that sheet I have before.
Wrap her up, Artie, you're way over.
Okay, well, I want to fast forward, I'll make one more point. With all this, and I'm going to say nonsense going on, he said, she said, pardon the pun, is water under the bridge. Just recently, in fact, they brought it up, recently, a board member of Haida reached out to me, sent me an email, hey, Artie, think you could facilitate a meeting with the ferry and Haida? You know, that puts me in a heck of a position. Okay, well, let me try. And so I met with Jake, and he was willing to meet on certain conditions. Basically, he didn't want, you know, he couldn't meet with the whole board. He wanted, he was going to leave my brother Dave home, and he wanted to meet with two of the board members. And so I sent an email to everybody. And so I sent an email to everybody, say, well, the ferry's willing to do this. And I suggested bringing in a third party to, to help the process along, because, you know, with these kind of negotiations, it takes a process. And I know Mike Malick, sorry to throw you under the bus, but you volunteered, and I said maybe Mike Malick or Kevin Hertels representative could attend this meeting to help facilitate the process, because I don't want it to be a setup for failure. And I suggested that we work on a loose framework first, and then once that's agreed upon, bring in the rest of Haida, bring in the rest of the ferry, and Blue Water Transportation at that point, to facilitate this deal. So I sent that back to Haida, and another board representative replied to me, said, no, you don't represent who, who represents Haida, it would be two other board members, one being Harold.
Okay, just a little clarification here, Artie, I'm gonna cut you off, because you're way over. I responded back to the emails to Artie.
Yeah, it took an hour to slam them.
So, excuse me, excuse me. Give me, give me 35 more seconds. So, they replied to me that, you know, they'll, they'll say who, who represents Haida. I thought, okay, we're gonna put my brother Dave and Harold Vane in a room to cut out a deal, you think that's gonna work? No. So, and the goal is to cut a deal, right? So, they said, no, you don't dictate who represents Haida. Number two, there will not be a third party to facilitate the deal. So we're gonna do it with no witnesses. And the third thing was, and all parties would have to sign a do not disclosure agreement. So, no witnesses, and we're not gonna tell anybody what we talk about. So, I replied, and, under those conditions, the township can't facilitate the meeting. Number one, is against the law for the township.
It's one minute, you said 35 seconds.
Okay, it's against the law for the township to go into a non-disclosure. Thank you.
Yeah, be public information.
If you look at our website, you'll see the letters that went back and forth.
Will you put my email on your website?
Give it to Maureen.
Okay.
Give it to Maureen.
Give us proof of what you say.
All right, you can read the letters. We have always simply requested rate oversight on the ferries, as part of any deal. Mr. Bryson doesn't want to do that, so we should give him 1.6 million dollars on a handshake and say, take care of us. That's what, that's their argument. We got a contract right here, right now, $5.75 round trip ferry crossing, we set rates, we give them money for employment, that's it. It's just, when you read things, you'll see that the Bryson family has not dealt, there's no fair dealing with them. It's just the way it is. Now, I don't blame him, it's his business. He should get to do what he wants to do.
Well, he's a private owner.
That's right, he should be able to charge whatever he wants to charge. We don't care.
It's just like, it's just like Sheplers, right? 37 kilometers to walk.
I wanna, let's have this.
Nobody can hear you.
I had a couple of questions, I ended up. My phone, I'm Mark Shrink.
Yeah, just come on.
Been on the island for 45 years. So this just came up to me this last week, I watched one of the videos of one of the meetings, and it, what kinda threw me a little bit was, people would ask questions, and then it was gonna get, you know, we'll answer that later, and it'll be on the website. So I thought, well, I'll go take a look. I looked at the.
Turn the mic off, push the button.
Oh, oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
No.
Sorry, bring that out.
I don't.
So I just started looking at this last week.
The mic's down.
Okay, sorry. Ah, that's why I did it now. Okay, so I just, you know, saw a couple of things on the website that caught my attention. And the one was on business, the 11-point business plan, I saw $38 million, and the first question, apparently this is the first one, is Haida buys out Champion Auto Ferry. So I thought, well, $38 million, is that what we're gonna pay Dave for the ferry, or? That's what's cost for a new ferry, right?
That'd be a new ferry.
New ferry system, yeah. So, what came to me immediately there, I'm thinking, well, geez, well, Pete, who's gonna, who's gonna pay for this, right? So what I understand now is that the cost, I'm sure for the financing, is gonna probably come out of milk.
The initial cost.
Yeah, that's $3 million a year, okay? Right now, the Brysons are asking for 1.6 million.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's $3 million a year financing cost on 38 million, 8%, that's pretty reasonable rate right now.
Listen, you can, these are businesses.
$38 million, $38 million, that's what's on your website.
I know, where do you pull up the financing costs? Have you talked to banks?
Anybody out here, what are you paying for a mortgage, you know, 7%?
80% is gonna come from the rate. So there's a financing, it's gonna be kind of.
The state's not gonna look at this like, they're, they're not gonna give us a bunch of money that's only for Harson's Island.
They just, they spent $5 million on a ferry for $60,000.
Right, that's, so if we're gonna pay for that milk, that doesn't seem, I mean, that's gonna be a lot of money.
There's no guarantee.
I mean, $3 million, you don't just give $38 million, and somebody's not, somebody's gotta pay for it.
Exactly.
Right? So that's, that's $3 million at 8%, and the way interest rates are going today, that could be 10% in two years, okay? And inflation, when you think about the operating costs of what it, what it takes to operate something nowadays, I go out to get a smash burger, a week ago, $20, $20!
Let's wrap up, please.
The inflation is part of this conversation, I did, does anybody out here get upset about the fact that you go to the gas station, $6 a gallon?
Wrap up, please.
So, okay, well, that is part of the conversation, because of the expense there, so I'm just throwing this out here, if you were to pay just the interest, $38 million?
You're not borrowing $38 million.
Somebody's got, if it's 38, it's on the website, $38 million, okay? Is that, I mean.
The mileage is there.
We're borrowing $38 million.
Okay, we'll, we'll skip that, there's a bunch of, I mean, if you start looking at how many round, how many round trips it would pay a year, fair, a year, to pay that $3 million interest.
Okay, you're over your time, please. Ask the guy over here.
Artie, I don't understand, I think this is. Oh, here, I'll leave here. Here's my question, anybody else have any questions?
Yep. I just wanna make one statement. Someone will reply to you on the website. Hey, just so, we have on the board, or up table up here, or if you just raise your hand, I'll walk around, but if anybody has a question, because I know we're probably, everybody wants to get the heck out of here, is that you can write this down, and if you could see, you write anything that's written down in that question, we will answer, it will be on the site, again, my word on that.
You said all the questions were gonna be on the site all right.
I invited you to a couple of different forums, but.
Put it on my app, right after you put.
Everybody will be killed by time here, too, Mr. Bryson, please, please, please.
In business school, they teach you that every business has three main enemies. The first enemy is government, and Dennis in his wonderful filibuster has demonstrated to you. The second enemy is incompetence. So I would like to read this to you, just came out last month, it's an article about the Washington State Ferries, which is the largest ferry system in the U.S., and owned and operated and run by the government. It has 21 road packs ferries, and it says here, reliability is a problem. As of September 20th, 2,660 trips have been canceled this year. Problems turned, vessel mechanical accounted for 567 or 21% of these canceled trips. Over the past decade, the ferry system has canceled thousands of trips due to mechanical problems. Again, this is a government-run ferry. The other big problems, crew shortages. This summer, hundreds of scheduled sailings were canceled, sometimes at the last minute because of insufficient Coast Guard certified crew. Routes that are normally served by two boats shuttling back and forth are often reduced to one. Waiting cars have been backed up for miles, and people sit in line for two or even three hours. Medical appointments are missed, family trips are disrupted, jobs aren't gotten to, and deliveries aren't made. Of the 2,660 canceled trips through September of this year, 1,390 were caused by missing The second of the big things that they teach you in business school is, don't put up with incompetence. Washington State Ferry is the perfect example of that. Now, the question is, do you wanna put up with the ferry service that you've got, which may or may not be perfect, or what they're, or what, what Washington State and the government-run ferries are at?
Government.
Government.
My name is David DeSere, and actually, I'm a business school graduate, summa cum laude, University of Houston, I'm from Texas, I'm here part-time, I love the island, I love the people, I love the passion. But if I may, I have a couple of questions. I'm also an attorney, not licensed in Michigan yet, but I'll work on that. Questions are, the first thing I've seen here today is the contract, and what I understand, this proposed contract, and to me, this looks like a public-private enterprise, a venture to where the ferry, Harson's Island, would take 1.6 million per year in government money, apply that, not borrowing 38 million or anything of the sort, is what I understand, applying that money to reduce ferry rates, and to help support quality transportation to the island, which is what everyone wants. And so I just wanna clarify, that's my question, is that what's being proposed here?
Yep.
Could you elaborate on that, just briefly, that one point, that we're talking about, public-private contract, to help fund the ferry, reduce her rates? And, if I may, I understand Haida is an appointed board by, appointed by elected officials, so indirectly, the elected officials appointing people to the board, we would have some control as citizens over the board that's ultimately appointed, if you could confirm that for us as well.
Who would have control, I'm sorry?
The people.
The people ultimately have the control.
We are an authority. We're appointed by the Township Board to handle anything under Public Act 196. Though, that act will tell you what our authority is. We don't answer to the board, and we don't answer to the public unless they say, hey, I don't like what you're doing, or I love what you're doing. But they don't get to vote on us being here, the board appoints us.
Understood, so the board is.
The board appoints them too, though, ultimately.
Yeah, HIPAA. First of all, the third plan. All right. So the, we would, the citizens would still have the board's ear, in terms of what they like, what they don't like, improve services, retain quality, and how the money, that is being.
The point is, is we're just putting it out for the public to vote. Do you wanna yes, wanna no, it's up to the public, on the village. The contract says that we would try to negotiate, and set a new ferry rate every August, depending on how much money's received.
So is the contract that I've just seen, just today, is that linked to the village, or is that?
No, there'd be no village, if that gets signed, there's no village.
That was my understanding as well, so there's no village. This is, this to me is, appears to be a third option. I've heard bridge, I've heard buyout, and other things, but this, this seems to make the most sense to me, personally, because again, I, as a, as, I don't homestead my property here, I homestead my property in Texas, but it makes the most sense to me, because it appears that we're getting funding, lowering costs, and engaging in this partnership, where the, ultimately, the board would have a say on, on rates and so on.
But Mr. Bryson has historically never wanted to relinquish any information about his income or expenses, and if you're gonna go into partnership with somebody, you're just gonna do a handshake and say, hey, take care of me? Or are you gonna say, wait a minute, let's, let's have full disclosure here, right?
Understood.
Well, and that's fine, if he doesn't want to, that's his right.
But my, my point is, my question was to confirm the nature of the contract. Contract makes perfect sense to me, is probably the best option, other than the status quo. And evidently, by the turnout, it looks like status quo is not satisfactory, some love it, some don't, I'm somewhat indifferent, but I like the, I like the idea of the contract.
Why don't you discuss it with Mr. Bryson, and ask him if you'd go along with it?
Hi, my name's Ed Bower, I live on the Dode, it's off the side. I truly don't understand why we're being charged, or why we would be charged this. We're, we use Anchor Bay Drive, we're by the North Channel Yacht Club, I don't know if you all know where that is, but now you've drug us into this fight, we don't have a dog in this fight, this makes no sense. I clearly understand, you guys, the Brysons, have an argument, and that argument is now drug all the other out islands, there's 450 cottages on the out islands, and each one of them would have to pay this $450 per year. And then, hold on, just hold on, sir, now, I don't clearly understand why we would have to pay for it, when we don't use any services here. Now, we do get police services, we do get fire services, the police boat, and the fire boat, and the airboats have all been out in the winter, I have an airboat, I live up here all the time, and I can guarantee you, I see them. Now, my question is, is you say that we don't get services, we do. We don't get trash services anymore, but other than that, we get services. Now, why can you charge us something, isn't this taxation without representation? Isn't this the same thing that America started for?
I don't think Haida says it's fair. I don't think Haida's saying it's fair. We didn't draw District Precinct 4, we didn't draw that, the Township Board drew it. Do I, do I think that the out islands should have to pay a tax when they hit no services? Uh, no, but we didn't put them there. Now, we understand the Township's gonna pass a resolution taking you out of Precinct 4 on Monday.
Right.
That's right. That's fine, that's up to the Township.
So how many more mills will you need then?
Yeah, we gotta do more mills.
Hey, listen, the village states what it states, it doesn't matter. If you wanna vote for it, vote for it, if you don't, vote against it. Sir, are there any more questions?
Randy Wilner, 2654 North Channel Drive.
So, it's my understanding that it's $38 million to get the ferry started, that is not money that we're borrowing, can you tell us how much money we have to borrow to get
So, in Haida's account, we have, we have a private businessman that builds infrastructure, and he would come in as a partner. he would come in as a partner to help us do that. He would also help us with financing to do it.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. My question is, how much money does Haida have to borrow? I don't want an explanation of where we're getting it from. Are we borrowing $38 million, or are we borrowing $20 million? How much do we get from the state, and how much are we getting individually?
Well, I can't answer those questions very honestly because we don't have the financing in place yet, so I can't tell you how much. We're just looking right now to get into the game. We make it like Beaver Island, got $10 million from the state and federal government. UPTA, which charges $375 for seniors round trip, is a ferry system just like we're proposing, just like the one that the Bryson family is running. There's $5 round trip there, they do about the same amount of business as here, we can't sit down here today at this meeting and give detailed figures on it.
I'm sorry, detailing, I was asking for details.
You've got them, you've got them.
So, there is a comparison with Sheplers, this is completely a terrible analysis. Sheplers is only foot traffic. If they allowed foot traffic to be free, they'd have no income at all.
No, no, we're not Sheplers.
I'm saying the comparison was made earlier that Champion does not charge for walkout, but Sheplers charges $37.
No, we're more in line with upper provincial transportation, we have nothing to do with Sheplers.
Is there anybody else who would like to?
You know, I just can't financially understand this whole thing, because if you're gonna tax us to build a ferry system or something else, we don't need that. I'd rather pay a dollar or $2 more to Bryson's ferry that's operating than start a new venture where we gotta hire people, give them all the benefits, operate 24 hours a day. I'm gonna tell you what, the guys that are gonna pay is every person that has a home on this island are gonna pay it in their taxes or somewhere. And I'm gonna tell you, on a piece of property that I have that's worth well over $1 million, I don't wanna pay $50,000 a year from ferry service, okay?
I'll throw in a few bucks for you, Mike.
Well, I wish you were a ferry entrepreneur.
We'll pass the hat for you, Mike.
We need to work it out with the Brysons and stick up.
So my name's Kevin Garrity, I'm on North Channel Drive. You're asking for the millage to be passed to go to the feasibility study and fairly a purchase of property. My question is, and I've asked it and I've not gotten the answer, is can we get the scope of work for the feasibility study from the company, the contract you have with them? Because that's what you're asking us to pay for. There was a little FAQ that answered a few questions, like high level what they're gonna do, but I'd like to see the scope of work, I'd like to see the contract you have with, I forget the name of the firm that's doing it. Today, just observing this meeting, it became very apparent to me, and I've been to many meetings, that there's a lot of contention between Haida and Champion, that goes without saying, and I don't think it's in our best interest that you're waging this war. I get the idea of safe, reliable, cost-effective transportation, but this is a war. Dennis, you read some historical facts, which was appreciated, but it was an editorial as well. And I don't think that's fair, and you're asking for our money now to support this initiative. Secondarily, if you get the millage, there's no guarantee you're gonna get funding, there's no guarantee. All these other examples you use are of ferries that are existing, that get money, Beaver Island. This is for a new ferry service, to compete with a private business. I just don't think the funding's gonna be there. So we're gonna pay you all this money to kinda go down a path, and then it's gonna be, you know, just, you know, if we, by chance get it. So, that's my feeling.
Can anybody else would like to speak?
No, you asked some good questions with scope of work. Let's start in there. Let's get some definition.
Why don't you come see us when we've got more time, and we'll go through everything for you to your satisfaction.
We can start with them one-on-one, right? So I just wanna say, Harold Bean, the chairman, was really, really sick today, 102 degree fever, and he felt like, you know, the people might think he was letting you down. So he, he's here in spirit, he didn't wanna come and get everybody sick, but I did want to let you know. I just have a few things to say, 'cause nobody wants to pay taxes, I understand that, none of us do. And I get angry at the people who say, you chose to live on an island, you deserve what's happening to you. I see this on social media, I've heard this from politicians, it's simply not true. When I bought here in 2005, I had no idea the scheming that was going on to avoid regulations, inspections, and rate control. That's why this board has explained to you what's happened with Champion, because it was a lot of scheming. I paid $90 at that time for a book and ticket, so it was less than $5 round trip. Like many seniors who want to spend their golden years here, I invested in my home with blood, sweat, and tears, only to find out that it's no longer safe and affordable. Did I expect the rates to increase? Some, yes, but not at this rate, you know, over double in 10 years. Make no mistake about it, this board is the only thing standing between us and many more rate increases, which will force many of my income or less to be, have to sell the places we love, and I worked so hard for. So with the letter that I've seen from Jake wanting 51 money to keep the rates where they're at, to me, that says it all. If he doesn't get this money, our rates are going up, and it's right around, if their efforts are squashed. People with multimillion-dollar properties might complain, seem to be complaining, well, I wish I had that problem, you know? I would, but safety, I mean, a lot of people don't know what has happened on this island. With, talk to Patty Kearneyhan, who lost her husband, because 23 times, they called the ferry system before they answered to come help her husband who's having a heart attack. He might have passed anyway, but, you know, what's the price on safety, right? I'm, the price, people I've been talking about is, I would break even quickly, the common people, I mean, when they would reduce the rates, they'd break even quickly, but I just want the island to be joined by many people, and not just the wealthy and the privileged, you know? But I just, as I stated before, I wanna thank the board for their hours and powers of effort, okay? I'm ready for a change. I want my children to inherit the place.
Is there anybody else would like to speak?
Make the motion to close.
You know what, I'm glad everybody came, at least everybody got to hear what we had to say.
Please push the jury back in.